At this time, we'll call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting for the purpose of agenda review for next week's meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Klickin.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Chairman Eiler.
Here.
We do have a quorum present. Would the clerk please read the proposed consent agenda items?
Item number one, consider approving the November 30th, 2017 business session minutes. Item number two, consider appointing Maria Holliday as the sixth district representative to the Transportation Council through December 11th, 2018. Item number three, consider appointing the following as members of the Southeast Consolidated Zoning Board with terms beginning January 1st, 2018. Ed Schleschelmann and Joseph Priebel through December 31st, 2018. Kenneth Klingsmith, Dennis Bowlen, and John Lloyd through December 31st, 2019. And Ken Sanderson and Jason Meyer through December 31st, 2020. Item number four, consider authorizing a contract with Wolin LLC at a cost not to exceed $165,200 for the replacement of the control tower voice switching system and backup trance receiver at New Century Air Center Airport, authorizing the creation of a project account for the same amount and approving the acceptance of KDOT grants up to the amount of $148,680 to partially fund the cost of the project. Item number five, resolution number 103-17, consider authorizing the cancellation of outstanding county issued checks that are at least two years old. Item number six, consider authorizing the purchase of the Microsoft Office suite of desktop PC productivity products, Word, Excel, Outlook, PowerPoint, OneNote from Softwarehouse International for an amount not to exceed $480,000 per Microsoft product and services agreement, MPSA number 4100035586, utilizing the NSPO value point contract, ADSP 016-130651. And item number seven, consider authorizing an interlocal cooperation agreement for fiber optical cable installation and usage between the city of Leewood, Kansas Unified School District number 229 and the Board of County Commissioners of Johnson County, Kansas.
Thank you. Mr. Otto Aaron, are you here?
Okay.
Is Larry here? All right.
There's Otto.
Excuse me. Aaron, would you like to address item number four?
Which of the two items would you like me to address?
Item number four, I believe it is.
Got it. Thank you. So many different issues. Aaron Otto from the Airport Commission, and yes, we have issues. So this is to replace a 1998 voice switch at New Century Tower. The difference between the two airports is that New Century, we're responsible for the equipment in that tower as we lease the top two floors of it. And so we went out to bid to try to find a suitable vendor for this and had two bids received. This was the lower of the two, and we're currently, we secured a KDOT grant to cover at least 90% of the first $90,000, and we're trying to see if there's any additional funds from KDOT to cover another 90% of the whole project, and that's what's pending. So at a minimum, we're on the line for about, at a minimum, we expect KDOT to put in $80,000. We hope they'll put in up to about $150,000 in this project.
And you mentioned KDOT. They do have funds for airport facilities, is that right?
There's a special $5 million that's called the Kansas Airport Improvement Fund, and those dollars are supposed to be reinvested back based on sales tax from fuel sold to Kansas airports, and so that's where the pot of money this would come from. It's a granting program.
Other questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Otto, are you comfortable with that we only had two qualified bidders?
Honestly, we extended it to keep it open to get as many as we did. It's a fairly specialized, from what I understand, line of work, and so, from what I understand from staff, this was not unexpected.
And do we have any kind of engineering estimate? I mean, is this within reason? I don't know if this is a good price or not. I mean, how do you judge that?
What the market will bear in this case. This covers purchase of equipment, installation, and all testing to bring it online.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Otto, fast. Aaron, as the state tries to find money for various things, we know they've gone after, excuse me, KDOT before with things. Are you comfortable that these monies won't be touched as the state goes through, or is that something we should keep an eye on with?
It's something that we actually added to the legislative platform this year, was kind of keeping those dollars that come off of sales tax from fuel sales staying into Kansas airports. So I'm grateful for you adding that this year as part of our legislative platform. To date, they have not gone after those dollars, I guess I'll put it that way, so we'll hope that trend continues. And keep our fingers crossed. We've been fortunate, there was also a grant we received from KDOT last year to help do some work at Executive Airport. So we've been the beneficiary of a few of these KDOT grants the last couple of years, and those dollars have come through.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Remain on consent?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Item number five is kind of a routine item that we do pretty much on an annual basis. Mr. Aldridge, is Michael here?
No.
Or someone else from DTI who can speak to item six and seven?
Yes. Yes, sir. I'm happy to speak to the following item. I wasn't prepared to speak to the cancellation of old checks, however.
Give it a shot.
Michael Aldridge, good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm the CIO and the DTI Director. The first item I'm going to talk about is the purchase of some additional Microsoft software. This is something we do each year. It's something that we are required to do to stay current with the Microsoft software. There are many advantages, of course, including compatibility. It ensures we receive the security enhancements and improved functionality. The cost does vary somewhat from year to year, but we're working on a strategy that will make that much more consistent. But again, this is something that we bring forward each year, and we're asking for the authority to make a purchase not to exceed $480,000.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Aldridge, do we have any options when it comes to the software that Microsoft is providing versus other strategies? And more specifically, the open architecture type of approach, is that something we've ever considered, or is that just too much to ask, given what Microsoft can do for us?
It is something certainly that I'm familiar with. I don't know that the county has explored it, so I can't speak for that. But in my experience, sir, that is an option often utilized by smaller organizations, ones who frankly lack the funding to purchase the product that provides the functionality and support that the Microsoft suite of products provide. What you're referring to is the Open Office Suite. One of the concerns that I have about that is, as you probably understand, that's created by basically a coalition of largely volunteers. And, for example, when security vulnerabilities are discovered, they are often addressed. But should that coalition disband or weaken in any way, that certainly could expose us to vulnerabilities, and that probably in itself is a big compelling reason to stay with Microsoft. The other thing is absolutely introduces compatibility issues, meaning files being sent into our organization or out of our organization sometimes aren't read or rendered quite properly. So I, again, for some smaller organizations, perhaps appropriate, but I don't think for Johnson County.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Remain on consent? So noted. Can you speak to item number seven?
Yes, I'm happy to. And before I dive into it, and I will be brief, my understanding is that this is the first interlocal agreement that we will be signing with your authority with the school, and that's something that the Board has asked us to make certain that we're looking for opportunities to do. So I was pleased to be able to bring that forward. This, we're asking for approval for an interlocal agreement between the city of Leewood, the Kansas Unified School District, and Johnson County. This really stemmed from a previous discussion at the March 16th Board Meeting where the wastewater infrastructure improvements were improved, and that included some improved connectivity, thus the fiber. So to achieve that, my team of people worked together with some of the other local Johnson County residents and basically found a win-win-win where we drive down the cost and, of course, be good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. The total cost of the work is $284,000 and change. The bulk of that was previously approved back at the previous March Board Meeting. The additional expense associated with what we're asking to do is a mere $1,800, and DTI will cover that cost. Lastly, just so you're aware, this will provide connectivity for the Blue River Treatment Plant, the City of Leewood Iron Horse Maintenance Facility, City of Leewood Fire Station number three, and Blue Valley Schools Prairie Star Middle School. I'll stand now for any other questions.
Very good. Good work. Thank you. Question, Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Aldridge, you mentioned the Blue Valley Schools. Do you see efforts like this continuing with the other school districts in Johnson County?
I do, sir.
Do you have anything on the horizon that you could share? If not, I would understand.
We might have things on the horizon, and I do have Jerry Swingle here with me this morning. Jerry, if there are things on the horizon that you can speak to, I would invite you to come share those with the Commission.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jerry Swingle with DTI. Yes, we actually have an agreement with DeSoto School District for fiber use, for us to utilize our fiber. That will get the new, of the Monticello Library, what we're working on, and then there's the library within DeSoto, and then the city of DeSoto wants connection back through us. We're also in talks with, we have been in talks with the Gardner Edgerton School District, but we're still in talks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Remain on consent? All right, so noted. Thank you. Next item on the action agenda is minutes. Mr. Ashcraft with absence, so that will stay on action. Next item.
Item number nine, consider authorizing an agreement with the city of DeSoto, Kansas for the provisions of law enforcement services in 2018 by the Sheriff's Office to the city of DeSoto for the amount, total amount of $469,527.
Very good. Michael.
Mike Farnesil, major with the Johnson County Sheriff's Office. This contract is basically the same as the previous year. We've had this contract since the early 70s, even before Sheriff Hayden's time there at the Sheriff's Office, so. I was a major at the Johnson County Sheriff's Office.
He was still in the knickers.
Yeah. The contract's basically the same. There is some adjustments. Mr. Dugan can speak on that for some of the calls for service, but it's basically the same contract.
So this is the same amount as the previous year, is that right?
It's not the same amount. It's...
What is the increase? Can you tell me that?
Tom Dugan with the Budget Office. This contract increases for 2018 in the amount of $10,349. That's around 2.3%.
All right. And a question I've asked more than once is, this covers our cost?
It does not fully cover the cost. In the absence of the contract, the sheriff would still have some policing responsibilities for the area. It is a partial recovery.
That's factored in. Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Consent?
Consent.
All right. So noted. Next item.
Item number 10, consider authorizing an agreement with the city of Edgerton, Kansas for the provision of law enforcement services in 2018 by the Sheriff's Office to the city of Edgerton for the total amount of $295,677.
Okay. Michael.
Once again, this is basically the same contract as the previous year. There has been some change because of the increase in size in DeSoto, the boundaries of DeSoto, sorry, the boundaries of Edgerton has increased in size, so this is covering some of that. The increase...
The increase on this one is $20,812. That's around 7.6%.
Okay. And that is, I'm assuming some of this is related to the logistics park area?
Yes, it is.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michael, could you, DeSoto's almost 470,000 while Edgerton's 300,000. What's the difference there? I didn't think DeSoto was that much larger, or is it a bigger area? How does that work?
One of the major differences between the Edgerton and DeSoto contract is DeSoto has contracted for a 40 hours extra, or an extra officer per week for 40 hours. So we dedicate one officer for 40 hours for the city of DeSoto. Edgerton has not requested that or asked for that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Well, again, is, can we leave this on consent? Put it, move it to consent?
Consent's fine.
So noted. All right. Next item.
Item number 11, consider authorizing a contract for the repair or rebuild of T-hangers at Johnson County Executive Airport as recommended by the Johnson County Airport Commission.
Mr. Otto.
Aaron Otto with the Airport Commission. Before you, you have one of the most succinct briefing sheets you'll ever see, very detailed. What we have is the bids for these T-hanger replacements are due today and this afternoon. And so as we discussed at our previous meeting, we're looking at a mix to replace the five hangers at the Executive Airport that were damaged on March 6th in a windstorm. So what I'd like to do is bring back to you next week, and we'll send it out as soon as it's available, a briefing sheet that describes a mixture of probably three rebuilds, two replacements, four rebuilds, one replacement, or maybe five rebuilds, and no repairs. Excuse me, I said that wrong. Some mixture of repair and replacement going forward. But again, the bids are due this afternoon, and we're trying to get this moving as quickly as possible in order to get construction underway and repair underway to get T-hanger leaseholders back in their buildings as quickly as possible. So we appreciate your flexibility in working with us on this. Ideally, we would have this information available, but again, it's due this afternoon from the different bidders.
Mr. Chairman. This will remain on action. Mr. Klickin.
Aaron, would you get this information as soon as you can to us, since I realize you're trying to put a placeholder in here, and I appreciate that and the urgency of getting this thing done. But as soon as you can get that information and, so if we have some follow-up questions, we can get back with you sooner, before next week.
Can share information. I will say that Airport Commission has a meeting to consider their recommendation to you. It's the day before your next meeting. So I will get you, we can show you what the...
There'll be kind of concurrent efforts going on.
You'll be back-to-back on top of each other.
Thank you.
I will share with you what the raw data, though, is.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Again, this will remain on, excuse me, Mr. Ashcraft.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Aaron, back on November 30th, you had a potential item concerning the Cunningham construction. Is this the culmination or follow-on to the same issue because we, okay, thank you.
Perfect memory.
All right. Next item.
Item number 12, resolution number 101-17, consider directing the county treasurer to allocate interest earnings from airport idle funds to the airport operating fund instead of the county general fund.
Mr. Otto.
Again, Aaron Otto with the Airport Commission. What's before you today is a resolution that would, as the title describes, redirect interest that's earned on airport idle funds to be retained in the enterprise fund for the airport to support infrastructure and the operational needs going forward. As you know, and this was done long before my arrival, a lot of work went into making the two airports in Johnson County as self-sufficient as possible, thanks to the efforts of the Business Park at New Century, and really starting in about 2006, that's when the airport, both airports largely went financially independent. And to kind of keep that in consideration, the airports, the last couple of years, it fluctuates every year what the budget is based on grant possibilities, but it's been around $6 to $7 million. And so for the last 10 years, that $6 to $7 million that's been supported by the enterprise fund and not necessarily through county general tax dollars. So what this change will do is it will take the interest earned off enterprise funds or idle funds generated by the airport and keep them within the airport's fund going forward. And my understanding is by past actions by the Board, it takes a Board resolution anytime you want to redirect interest from anywhere but going back to the general fund, which is why we're going to do that. This was talked about and considered by the Airport Commission at their last meeting and brought forward with their approval to you.
Mr. Klickin.
The question, Aaron, I have on this, I don't have a problem with the money being transferred back to the airport, but I hate for, I'm questioning whether it's, should go back into the general fund versus maybe a reserve fund of the airport? And the reason on that is that these are dollars that you can't count on year from year on, it's totally dependent on what the market is doing. And this still gives you access to it, but it's money you're not counting on every single year after year. Is that possible to be considered and still achieve your same goal?
I think the dream will be is that you don't spend money you don't have. So you can make a projection of what you think you'll get in a year, but at best, don't spend anything that may be coming in versus what did come in. So maybe at best, you spend one year in the rear, so to speak, in terms of actually having known what interest you do make. Because you're right, this number, if you look at the last 10 years, has fluctuated between $35,000 to $100,000 any given year, largely based on what you talked about.
If you put it in the general fund, start doing it on a general fund basis, it gets into the normal projections, and it may be somewhat misleading if all of a sudden we have a bad year, for instance. And sometimes I see these interest funds could be more beneficial if they're used to support federal capital dollars that you have needs, because most capital dollars you receive are either, what, 75% or 80% federal dollars? But you receive that, you need to have that local match in place. And if these funds could be allocated back to you as a protection to, for future federal dollars, it seems like it may have a little more benefit.
Okay.
Is that possible?
Yeah. That's something we'll look into some more, but I agree with you that it'd be challenging to spend projections, let's put it that way.
Thank you. Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Aaron, structurally, this makes sense, so I'm supportive of this, but clarify, will TFM continue to manage those investment funds? Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. Great question.
Any other questions? Remain on action or consent?
Consent.
All right. So noted.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item number 13, consider authorizing the mental health center to add six FTEs and reclassify the use of reserves for case manager positions to provide community-based services in Johnson County.
Mr. Dewise.
Tim Dewise, Mental Health Department. First of all, I wanted to just share with you that at the time that we began the 2018 budget, I did not envision appearing before you to ask for six positions or any additional FTEs other than the coresponders that we've worked with the cities on. Fortunately, the Kansas Legislature provided us some modest 3% increase, I would call it a restoration, not an increase, in state general funds to the mental health centers. That equaled roughly about $600,000 to us for the fiscal year 2018. So we received that money, and, well, we received all of that money for this fiscal year from the state. So what I'd like to do is provide you a little background, share with you the request, share some alternatives, and then talk the financial situations, and I'll do that briefly with time and thought. I've shared with you before the need that exists within our community. If you take kids that have a severe emotional disturbance and adults who suffer with a severe or serious mental illness, you're roughly talking about 18,000 Johnson County residents that could or would need services from us at some point in time. What we know is that we project that we'll serve roughly about 10,000 this year. So we meet the need of about half the people that actually do that. So what we have to do is we have to manage our resources the best that we can to meet the demand of our community and do that in a way that keeps our community safe. And I think that through the next couple of graphs, I can demonstrate that we've done that. If you look at, when I became the Director in 2014, we were roughly at 307 FTEs. We have added our coresponder positions, but in that, and the coresponder positions don't really impact our fee for service, we have found efficiencies, we have become better at providing services, and there's a number of reasons for that, but we've seen a steady increase in our fee for service. And in 2017, we believe that that will go over the $10 million mark. We also look at the number of clients served, and so with very few FTEs, seven FTEs added over the last two years, we have steadily increased the number of clients we serve. Again, that has been through a process of improving the work that we do, focusing on evidence-based practices and following fidelity, and developing partnerships with our community. If you look at the population, and I know that you've seen these projections for the Johnson County population, but what we've done is changed that graph to demonstrate what, if we currently continue to serve about the same percentage of the need in Johnson County, what we see is a steady increase over the next seven to 10 years. And so we are about where we think we'll be. We'll roughly end this year serving about 10,000 clients, but we'll see that continue to go up. The reason this is important is because I think it makes sure, at least demonstrates the need that we'll all be before you at points in the future, given the state legislature's funds, to hopefully continue to try to keep up with that demand. So the request itself, the request itself is to have you all approve six FTE case management positions. All of these positions are revenue-producing positions, and they will be funded with the increase that we receive from the state through our mental health, our participating mental health center contract. No additional county support will be needed for these six positions. The considerations, why six? Tanner and I and my staff have talked a lot about what makes the most sense to get us through this next year, 2018. And the considerations that we had really have to do with loss of fidelity, and when I speak of loss of fidelity, I mean loss of fidelity of following the model that we have prescribed to, that we see the highest outcomes. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Case load sizes. Case load sizes are part of that fidelity scale. Our targets should be between 15 and 18 for kids and 20 to 23 for adults. And then there are also multiple other factors that they look at fidelity, including team size, how you write treatment plans, notes, all those kinds of things. So it's not just, that's not just the single thing. It's a matter of a number of indicators whether we meet fidelity. The other piece that we see as in the increase is as we've developed partnerships with our local law enforcement, with our coresponders, as we have developed a relationship with the Sheriff's Department, and we're now screening every individual with a brief mental health screen at the time of booking, this all increases the number of people that get referred to us. So we continue to see a higher number of people, not only just coming into the mental health center, but as we develop those relationships with other departments, we see an increased demand as well. I provided a little bit of information about the fidelity scale. When you look at the fidelity scale for the strengths model fidelity, again, this slide shows that in order for us to achieve roughly a four, which would be good fidelity, we would need to be between that 15 to 18 caseload size, and for adults, we would need to be at the 20 to 23 caseload size. We also know that this will impact our performance measures, so I had included in the document some of the performance measures that are key, and that has to do with the number of client suicides that we have, competitive employment, living permanent, in a permanent home, attending school regularly, and if we're seeing improvement overall from the clients that we're serving. So alternatives, we could continue the same course of action that we have right now, which ultimately will, it will ultimately mean a reduction in the intensity and quality of services that we provide that will negatively impact the outcomes. It could also mean that over time, we will lose fidelity with our evidence-based practice, and there is associated revenue with the enhanced rate that we receive for being a fidelity-based site. And we are the only mental health center in the state of Kansas that has 100% fidelity for our case management teams. We could implement a waiting list. That would be in violation of state statute, but we could actually do that. Or we could eliminate at some point in the future, if we needed to, lower priority services. So the funding, if you look at the expenditures, the total expenditures would be $494,840. When we look at the revenues, we project conservatively that our fee for service revenue for these positions would be about $167,543. Our... service revenue for these positions would be about $167,543. Our increase in the contract from the state, we would use $327,297. So we would have the total revenues of $494,840. So just, as I said a minute ago, that the increase was roughly about $6,000, we would only be utilizing about half of the total amount that we receive for the state for these positions. The remainder of that, we have used for some additional psychiatric time, and the rest of that we'll use to fall through to our reserves, because we understand that we have to be aware of our finances, and we've been on a slippery slope, so to speak, over the last number of years, but we're in a stable place right now, and we want to be conservative and cautious as we move forward. So the other piece that I would say is that in talking with budget, in talking with the County Manager's Office, we've all agreed that if approved, the six positions, we would hire three of those positions immediately, shortly after the first of the year. We would hold the other three positions to wait to see how the state legislature started moving forward, and we would also look at our early returns in 2018. If all of those look good, as I expect they will, then we would refill or we would fill the additional three positions mid-year. And now, stand for any questions?
A couple of questions of the County Manager's Office. I assume that this request has gone through the vetting process?
Yes, it is, both with the PRC and other entities. We met with Tim earlier last week, and we're in support of this issue and it's gone through normal processes.
And this will not require any kind of public hearing to adjust the 2018 budget?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Pardon?
No, it does not.
Will not. Okay. Mr. Allen?
I'd just like to congratulate Tim and Tanner. I think this is a very well-thought-out program. Your foundations of supporting why it's necessary and the incremental increase on that. And I would strongly agree that because of various programs, there are more people being referred to Johnson County Mental Health, so, and obviously, I like that no additional revenues projected to be due, but very good report. Thank you.
Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Tim, a few questions.
Yes.
Very good presentation. I appreciate it very much. Long-term funding for these positions, what's your thought process there, given the stability of the revenue stream that you kind of hinted at?
Right. I think that we have to be very cautious. I think that any money that we receive from the state is a caution, we have to take a cautionary note. I know that we've received this, this $6,000, this 3% increase, that will continue. They had indicated that there would be another 3% increase this upcoming year. We'll have to wait to see if that, that happens. But if, for whatever reason, things go south, then we will readjust. And just to demonstrate, you know, in 2011, I had almost nearly 400 FTEs. Today, I have 322. So we're no stranger to needing to scale things back if we need to, but it's about managing the resources that we have and making the biggest impact within our community. And I think we can do that over the next few years.
Very good. Thank you. Follow-on then. On Slide 4, you talked about number of clients served, and I was going to ask you about that, but then on Slide 10, you showed your programmatic impacts, the outcomes. So I appreciate that. But what I didn't quite catch was, how do you think those outcomes will be impacted? You've got a couple areas that are in the red, but are you, do you see an actual shift there or a partial shift in...
Yeah, I think the biggest impact right now, where we're seeing the greatest demand is with kids, and we have a large demand from the school districts to continue to work and develop with them. So I would see the majority of these positions going to our children's services, so that we probably would, could see an increase in improvement in our school attendance as well as permanent family homes. I would expect that we would see those improve, given that the demand doesn't just completely increase and get us back to difficult case load sizes.
I understand. The other one was suicides, though. Is that, is that a different...
That one, that one is, is a more difficult one to predict.
Okay. I understand. Thank you. Mr. Clicca?
This question is more for Scott for future information. Scott Newfield. Scott, is mental health tied under, is it one of our exceptions we have with the tax lid?
No.
No.
No. But that is one that we are attempting to incorporate for our agenda here that would free up some opportunity here.
So we did include that in this year's legislative platform, to make sure that if we did not have a repeal of the tax lid, that we looked at changing that so that mental health services would or could be considered as a...
In follow-up, I just asked Assistant Manager Maury Thompson to get with you a little bit here. What I'd like to do is get kind of a snapshot of kind of some simple projections for the next five years, based of what the needs from a mental health standpoint and the various capabilities. Just like Commissioner Ashcraft was alluding to, one of the areas of, I think you know, Tim, I'm concerned with is the suicide issue, especially among kids and things like this. And I'd like to get a better understanding of where we are today and where do we see, what kind of needs are we going to have as we come down the next three to five years?
We can absolutely do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Osterhaus?
Tim, first, I have to congratulate you on your shirt, tie, and jacket combo.
I was hoping you would say something.
Appreciate that. We did not coordinate. That's just for the record. Thank you for this presentation. Very good. Along kind of the lines of Commissioner Clicca and Commissioner Ashcraft, I guess as we get ready to prepare for our budget here, if you feel like state funding is not matching or the perceived needs that you have, I hope that you'll take that into the budget meeting so that we can consider, you know, additional revenue from the county's perspective if, you know, we're seeing the need. And I know there's, it gets tricky because part of that's the state's responsibility, but if there's truly a need for that, then I think we should, you know, as commissioners, look at that and address the possibility of, you know, changing our budget up a little bit.
I will, you know, I will continue to work with Scott and his staff to look at how we can ensure that as a county, we're making sure that each of our departments, including mine, are doing their part to make sure that we meet the needs of all of our citizens. So I think we'll, we'll continue to do that, and I will express our needs loudly.
Great. Thanks.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. In relation to the request for six additional FTEs, et cetera, this will remain on action. Next item?
Item number 14. Resolution number 102-17 and the City of Gardner application number FDP-17-04. Consider a final development plan approval for consideration of a 646,000-square-foot freight and distribution warehouse, an approval of an administrative plat at the Midwest Commerce Center located at Old Highway 56 and Mercury Street, Gardner, Kansas.
Mr. Greeley?
Good morning, Paul Greeley with the Planning Department. This item comes to you because it's within one mile of the New Century Airport under that statute review. The project is in the City of Gardner and has been through their process, processes, and unanimously approved. It's for construction of a 646,000-square-foot warehouse building that's primarily involved in school supply distribution. On the screen is the location. If you're interested, the top picture shows the runway, that vertical white line. This white, large structure is the Coleman Warehouse that's out there now. Been there for about 10 years, and this project is within a business park approved back when Coleman came in, right to the east, inside the red rectangle. And then the bottom side shows a closer-up version of where this project will be located, if you're interested. So it's been through the city processes. The Airport Commission held a public hearing on this back last week, December 6th, unanimously recommended approval, and staff also recommended approval of this project. Available for questions?
Just as a matter of information, Commissioner Brown and I attended a groundbreaking for this facility Monday. This organization is consolidating five other facilities from around the country into this location, and there will be 200 or slightly in excess of 200 employees at this facility. It is specifically located just to the east of the Coleman Facility. And as we were told, there's only three components. One is distribution, and there may be some assembly or slight light manufacturing, and thirdly, a call center located in this facility. So congratulations to the City of Gardner, LS Commercial, who's developing the property. Excellent project. Any other questions?
Well, this is a planning item, so it will need to remain on action. Are there any other items to consider on the agenda review?
No, sir.
All right. That concludes our agenda review. We continue in recess from our regular session. We will need to reconvene in the open session and reestablish our time period for the executive session. Mr. Allen?
Thank you. I move that Ward resets its open meeting and convenes an executive session at approximately 11:30 a.m. for a period of 20 minutes for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected officials to protect the privacy of employees and to reconvene an open session in this room at approximately 11:50 a.m. or as soon thereafter as the executive session may end.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to authorize the, make adjustment in the timing for the executive session, as noted. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shaver?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Clicca?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chairman Eiler?
Aye. Okay. We continue in recess, and we'll begin the executive session pronto.